We're live now.
Take a look.
Mm-hmm.
And then I just got there on the first day. So I'm going to go away for a half an hour, six to four days. And then I'm getting. September. Yeah.
And you can't get how about conference? Chinese conference is not on. In my room.
Well, you just.
You know, conference. You can have it. And then it's just less according to the president. Everybody else is. They are speakers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See that one.
You got a good tan. We can see that every day. Oh, we also think we're pretty.
So I can make a little. Like, keep it.
Why would I just say that? I just.
It's not.
Your arms. Oh, yeah. You can't keep an eye on me.
All right. For like.
No, it was like right here.
We're live.
Uh, how is this? You can leave that.
No, good.
Well, that is not where you sit.
I'm bringing our.
James, you do sit over there.
I did not.
If you sit down there.
I have.
You never write this.
I just don't have to.
You want to. Oh, we're live tonight.
No, but this is throwing me off because I don't.
We'll get you.
Everywhere you sit.
Our first was not until next week.
Jeff's always down there and you're always over there.
Our first one was not until next week.
Oh, okay.
You're safe.
I don't think this is.
I wasn't.
I don't think it moves.
He'll bring him in next morning.
You can hear yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're just talking. We were testing it.
What's that?
I said, give me your best voice, gee.
I'll all get in trouble on that one. No, I won't get any trouble. Yeah, you can do that. There.
When you decide. It's on the YouTube. I have it linked if you ever are here. I have it linked. Whatever. It's not safe. It was just a little.
You know, keep this by.
Oh, isn't it? You go back and. It's like.
I watched his wife.
Yeah, the other ones are there. Okay. Maybe I'm just. Yes, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. If you please rise, join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, MBC. Dr. Grayble, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
We do have one addition. Uh, under, uh, number seven action items, need to add K, um, approval of revised transportation handbook.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
We've been seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That changes group. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion of approving the consent agenda.
Seconded. We've been seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Onto our. Oh, I'm sorry. My gosh, Lori, do we have anybody?
We do not.
Okay. All right, well, that worked out.
You still have to ask.
I know. Um, and then on to action items. I was just so excited to have Baker Tilly here tonight. I just wanted to get to it, so.
Yes, we have Sean. Sean here from Baker Tilly. Um, he's been doing presentations to, uh, his clients, uh, school boards on the impact of Senate Bill One. And, uh, we're still trying to wrap our heads around that. And they offered to do that, so we took him up on that. And he's here, uh, to kind of share the, some initial, um, thoughts on the impact of, of now Senate Enrolled Act One. Now it's, it's a law now, so he's going to kind of walk us through that.
Yeah. Good evening. Uh, thank you for the invitation. It's my pleasure to be here to, um, speak with you regarding some legislative updates and the estimated impact on Pioneer Regional School Corporation. Now, there are twenty-seven pages here. I'll probably take twenty minutes for each slide. No, I'm kidding. Um, I'm going to try and keep this to twenty minutes, which means I'm going to skip some material. Um, my contact information is in the back. You're also welcome to send any, any questions you have to Dr. Grayble, uh, and, and I can answer those as needed. If you'd like me to come back at any time, I'm happy to do that. I just understand this is a public meeting and, uh, we all have lives outside of this room. Um, so I will start on Slide Two. Uh, this simply lays out all of the, um, really transformative changes that have occurred since, really, the early nineties. Um, the purpose of this slide, you know, is to compare Senate Enrolled Act One and some of these sweeping changes to property taxes in an effort to provide property taxpayers with some relief on their, their annual tax bill. Um, from a school financing perspective, we can compare these to some of these other transformative changes where, um, you know, we really didn't know how they were going to impact school corporations when they were first, um, enacted. Uh, but we stand here today. We got through them. So this will be just another one of those, um, really impactful changes, but one with enough planning, foresight, proactive, uh, action. Uh, should be no problem to get through. Um, Slide Three lays out, um, really all of the major changes, uh, that have been included in the legislation, uh, passed in, in the last session. Uh, these, this is not by any means an exhaustive list, but these are the ones that will have an outsized impact on public school corporations. This evening, I'll be focusing primarily on Senate Enrolled Act One as, and, and within that primarily on the changes to property tax deductions, as well as the local income tax structure and how that may impact school corporations here. Uh, on the far right side, you can see when that legislation becomes effective, um, and, and, uh, that can kind of inform when you can anticipate to see those have an impact, uh, on the school's finances. Uh, so next slide, Slide Four, um, property tax changes. So from the property taxpayers' perspective, this is a fantastic bill. You're going to see relief on your property taxes starting in twenty-twenty-six. From the school corporation's perspective, well, that just makes things a little more challenging. There's going to be, um, you can expect to receive less property tax dollars, uh, from your, from your annual property tax levy. Uh, the, the first, uh, thing we'll cover is the changes to deductions. So today in twenty-twenty-five and what you saw in your twenty-twenty-five property tax bill, uh, is a standard deduction, uh, that maximizes at forty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, you also, if you add a home, and this is strictly for homestead properties. So if, if you have a homestead, you by all means should be receiving the standard deduction that maximizes at forty-eight thousand dollars, as well as the supplemental homestead deduction, um, that this year was thirty-seven and a half percent. Homesteads simply meaning your primary residence. Uh, as you can see in this schedule, they are phasing out the standard deduction. So that, that'll be reduced every year beginning in twenty-twenty-seven, all the way down to zero in twenty-thirty-one. To counteract that and, and more than make up for, for the loss of that deduction, they are ramping up the supplemental homestead deduction from today at thirty-seven and a half percent, all the way up to two-thirds of the gross assessed valuation. So what that means is for homesteads in twenty-thirty-one and thereafter, you'll be paying taxes on approximately one-third of the value of your property. Um, that's a significant reduction in net assessed valuation from where we are today. Additionally, at the very bottom of property tax bills for, for homesteads, uh, property taxpayers will receive an additional credit. So whereas a deduction is a, uh, reduction to the taxable value, a credit is a straight, um, reduction to the dollars, uh, that, that property tax liability to the bill. So after calculating the gross property tax bill, after taking out property tax replacement credits, which we'll cover here in a minute, after accounting for circuit breaker impact, um, homestead property tax bills are going to be reduced by the lesser of ten percent of that property tax bill or three hundred dollars. Um, that begins in twenty-twenty-six. What that means is even after accounting for circuit breaker, there's going to be a reduction. So, uh, circuit breaker, uh, we all enjoy it. It's in the Constitution of Indiana, um, caps property tax bills for homestead at one percent of the taxable, of the gross assessed valuation of that property. So if you have a three hundred thousand dollar home, the most you could pay, barring any referendum, would be three thousand dollars per year. And then this credit is after that. So it'll be further reduced for a three hundred thousand dollar home. That would be, uh, a further reduction of, of three hundred dollars. So instead of three thousand dollars, you're paying twenty-seven hundred. Uh, additionally here, there's some, um, uh, further benefits to those who, uh, receive the sixty-five and over circuit breaker tax credit, uh, as well as some additional credits offered to, um, disabled homeowners and veterans. All right, moving right along. So this next slide simply illustrates how those deductions change net assessed valuation. So if we assume the median value of a homestead in Royal Center, which is, uh, just below a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, you can see how that standard deduction winds down, the supplemental homestead deduction ramps up, and then that net assessed valuation, which is the taxable value of this property, uh, goes from eighty-eight thousand dollars all the way down to just below sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, of course, this assumes no growth year over year in that, that assessed value. Uh, but you can see that without that growth, um, there is anywhere between a four percent and a seven and a half percent reduction. Why does this matter to the school corporation? Well, property tax rates are calculated based upon the school corporation's net assessed valuation. The school corporation's net assessed valuation is just a basket of all of the homesteads, the agricultural land, their net assessed valuation. So when a homestead's net assessed valuation goes down, so does the school corporation's. This next slide, uh, illustrates a little more realistic situation. What, what does the net assessed valuation look like if this valuation of the homestead grows by three percent every year? That's what we would consider to be reasonable, um, although past years, you've probably seen your home rise much more than three percent, the value of your home. Um, but we can see here that even with three percent growth to that assessed valuation, net assessed value, uh, never increases. It's relatively flat, flat in twenty-six and then actually declines, um, increasingly all the way up to five point four percent in twenty-thirty-one. That is, of course, before the credit because the credit, again, is a reduction to the bill, not to the assessed value. Uh, on the next slide, um, for the first time, uh, at least since I've been doing this, um, past ten years, uh, properties subject to the two percent tax cap are going to see, see, uh, deductions, uh, to their valuation. So, um, properties subject to the two percent cap are secondary residential, so your rental properties, uh, long-term care facilities, as well as agricultural land. So in twenty-six, they'll see a six percent deduction and that ramps up all the way up to one-third of their assessed valuation in twenty-thirty-one. Uh, next slide. So this shows agricultural land is different, um, than, than typical property where it's assessed. Uh, typical property is assessed on a rolling basis. Usually every four years, you're, the assessor comes out, recalculates your assessed valuation. And then in between there, uh, there's, there's general trending applied to that, uh, value, to that valuation. But that's generally, um, the, the value of your, your homestead is likely tied to market value, to recent sales, things like that. Whereas agricultural land is tied to productivity factors and they assign a base rate per acre. Uh, so that's what this slide illustrates is what that base rate per acre has been since two thousand and seven. We see significant growth, uh, in the early twenty-twenty's and beginning in twenty-twenty-six, when that, uh, deduction rolls on, uh, you, you begin to see a bit of a decline. They've also changed the formula, the rolling average formula that they use to calculate that base rate assessment. Uh, moving on, uh, personal property, business personal property. So this is things like inventory, equipment. Um, this is, of course, subject to the three percent property tax cap. So where homesteads were capped at one percent of their, um, their gross assessed valuation or market value. Two percent cap, those agricultural land, but, um, secondary residential, rental properties, secondary residential and long-term care facilities are capped at two percent. Businesses, industrial, commercial are capped at three percent of the valuation of their property. A de minimis exemption means that anything below this amount, you do not have to report, uh, for property tax purposes. Currently, that is eighty thousand dollars. So if you have equipment, inventory, um, other personal property totaling eighty thousand dollars, you do not have to report that for, um, purposes of taxes. Beginning in twenty-twenty-seven, that is going to increase to two million dollars. So, uh, small and middle-sized businesses, uh, are, uh, are anticipated to very much benefit from this provision, uh, whereas perhaps larger corporations that have personal property in excess of two million dollars, uh, will see no change. Next slide, um, some additional items. The MLGQ, which is the maximum levy growth quotient, that is a rate that the state puts out every year. And, and from the school corporation's perspective, that's how much the operations fund levy can grow. So regardless of what your assessed valuation does or how much money you actually need for operations, you can only increase that levy by four percent year over year. Based upon previous methodology of how that, that rate was calculated, uh, it was anticipated that you would see a maximum of five point six percent growth in that fund. Uh, they've changed the calculation of that MLGQ moving forward. Uh, excess levy appeals are, are going to be eliminated. So if, if barring an emergency, if you have significant assessed value growth, you're no longer able to kind of capture that within your tax rate, um, to help fund operations and things like that. Next slide, keeping an eye on time. Uh, if you do plan to increase either your property tax rate or levy year over year, there's going to be an additional step in the budget approval process, and that is that additional public hearing on, uh, which generally would be on October seventh. Um, and this begins in the twenty-twenty-nine for twenty-thirty budget prep cycle. Uh, moving along. In summary, uh, you can anticipate a minimal amount of new money coming into the education fund. That's done, stems from House Bill One, zero, zero, one, where the, every two years, they set the state budget. Included in that is the per pupil funding or state tuition support formula. Um, minimal amount of new money coming to education fund. We're seeing increases in the amount of funding for charter schools, as well as additional expenses that are expected to be paid out of the education funds. So while you may see a increase in per pupil funding, that generally doesn't account for some of the increased costs uh, that are now expected to come out of the education fund. Again, that maximum levy growth quotient is going to be limited, so any new money in the operations fund, uh, should be, uh, conservatively estimated. And, uh, beginning in twenty-twenty-eight, this is what we're going to move into next. Um, you may see an increase in circuit breaker property tax credits due to, due to the removal of, um, property tax replacement credits. Yeah, I see that. All right. So moving into how all of this may impact the school corporation. So these are all projections based upon what we know today. In order to really understand how this may impact the school corporation, I figured we'd do just a little bit of review. Um, so the school corporation has separate funds. It's not like it has one big pile of money that it can spend on whatever it likes. Um, instructional costs. So basically everything associated with the classroom, including teacher salaries and benefits, are included in the education fund there on the right. That education fund is funded entirely by, by dollars from the state that are determined by that, that state tuition support formula established every two years at the, uh, biennial session. A certain portion of those state aid dollars are up to fifteen percent, are able to be transferred to the operations fund. Now, this may seem misleading that state dollars are, are just able to flow into operations. Previously, there were, there were a bunch of different funds. There was the general fund, and then there was the capital projects fund, the bus replacement fund, and the transportation fund. In twenty-nineteen, they, uh, combined all those funds into two. The education fund, which is essentially the general fund, and the operations fund, which is the other three. They did take some expenditures that were in the general fund and moved them over to operations. So that's what the transfers are intended to cover is those expenditures that previously were funded by the state that are now in the operations fund. So starting on the left, we have the property tax supported funds. Now, property taxes, uh, are, uh, reduced, of course, by circuit breaker tax credits and will be further reduced by the additional, um, the additional tax credit of three hundred dollars or ten percent of the bill beginning in twenty-twenty-six. I like to think of the property tax structure as, um, the pyramid of champagne flutes you see at a fancy wedding. So up at the very top is referendum funds. So when you pour the champagne, that's going to get filled up all the way to the brim. There's not going to be any circuit breaker losses in that fund. All of the spillover is going to be captured by the debt service fund. The debt service fund, of course, pays your bonds. In order to get a good credit rating, a good interest rate on your bonds, those bondholders need to be sure that they're going to get their principal and interest payments on time. So that's the second priority is to make sure we can pay our debt. Everything left over flows into the operations fund. So the operations fund is, is the last in line and incurs all of the circuit breaker, uh, credit losses, as well as any additional, say, um, delinquencies, shortfalls. The operation fund feels the brunt of basically anything negative. And then the little bucket over there on the right, the rainy day fund gets what it gets when it gets it. Um, moving along, the second slide just kind of reiterates or, or revises that same, uh, what I just covered, so we'll move on. All right. So when we're talking about funding the school corporation's operations, what, what exactly are we talking about? What is the breakdown of, of what I'll call operating dispersment? So these are going to be, what is the education and the operations fund paid for? There is no referendum at this time. Uh, fifty-seven percent of annual expenditures, which total ten point nine million, are, uh, salary and wages, primarily teachers. Um, employee benefits represent an additional seventeen percent. So that, what is it, seventy-four percent, uh, of annual expenditures are dedicated to employees. Supplies at thirteen percent, uh, that would include things like, um, really classroom instruction, technology, things of that sort. Um, and then you can go down the line to see, uh, really the breakdown and composition of expenditures on an annual basis. This next slide illustrates the same thing, but from a revenue standpoint. So those dollars from the state to fund the education fund, uh, teacher salaries, wages, instructions, uh, benefits, things of that nature, uh, represent sixty-seven percent of your ten point two-five million dollar annual revenue. These are twenty-four numbers. Uh, property taxes represent, uh, twenty-one percent of annual revenue, and that's included, um, and yeah, so essentially your operations fund revenue, um, is twenty-one percent of that. Uh, other local sources, those are things like, um, uh, commercial vehicle excise tax, uh, financial institutions tax, things, things of that nature. Those are, those are just additional tax revenues that are, are income sourced from certain businesses and licensures, um, that, that the school corporation receives. And then federal sources would be, I believe, grant revenue and things of that nature.
Which are shrinking.
That one?
Yeah.
Uh, next slide shows the certified net assessed valuation. So thi- this goes back to twenty-sixteen. You can see how since twenty-twenty-two, that assessed valuation has grown, and this is consistent with what we're seeing all across the state. It's grown, grown at an, at an, in, it's grown weirdly fast. Um, so what this means, not only for the school corporation, but also for taxpayers, is assessed valuation directly impacts the property tax rate. You can see on the top left how property tax rates are calculated is you take the tax levy. So if we use the operations fund, that can only grow by four percent a year. You put that up top and then you divide it by the total collection of net assessed valuation within the school corporation, divided by a hundred because property taxes are levied per hundred dollars of net assessed valuation. So just basic arithmetic says that if assessed valuation increases and the tax levy stays the same, that property tax rate is going to go down to generate the exact same amount of money. Conversely, if assessed value decreases and you need the same amount of money in your tax levy, the tax rate is going to increase. So what you've seen with this, uh, really, um, in ordinary rise in assessed valuations is downward pressure on the tax rates, which I believe is on the next slide. And, and here you can see that kind of come to fruition. So top left, rearranging that calculation. Now let's calculate the tax levy. So how many dollars do you need? Well, that, that equals the tax rate multiplied by the net assessed valuation divided by a hundred. So it's not necessarily in the school corporation's control, uh, whether the tax rate increases or decreases. All that, all they can really control is the amount of dollars that they're requesting on an annual basis. Um, next slide. So when we're talking about changes to the homestead properties, to agricultural lands, to that net assessed valuation, it's important to understand the composition of the school corporation's net assessed valuation. So twenty-six percent of their net assessed valuation is homestead properties. Fifty-seven percent is other residential rental properties and agricultural land or long-term care facilities. I'm guessing that's largely agricultural land. Uh, business personal property, uh, where we were talking about that de minimis exemption increasing represents ten percent. So how these deductions impact that total net assessed valuation, which, uh, determines your tax rate, is something we're going to be keeping a close eye on so that, um, your property taxpayers, um, aren't going to see many surprises. I think messaging in terms of what that property tax rate means and at the, at the end of the day, what the rate translates to on their property tax bill, um, because in a lot of instances, when we're projecting these out, we see increased rates and property tax bills still going down. Uh, so moving forward, okay, local income taxes. Uh, Senate Bill One eliminated what are called property tax replacement credits, as well as, um, school corporation's ability to collect certified shares, as they're known today. Um, so Pioneer Regional School Corporation receives revenue from two different types of local income taxes. One, uh, is a certified shares distribution. Um, this is not something that school corporations in every county receive, but, uh, CAS and White County have both structured their local income tax to distribute what are called certified shares or proportional shares to school corporations. Uh, in total, from both CAS and White County in twenty-twenty-five, uh, Pioneer Regional School Corporation is anticipated to receive approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So beginning in twenty-twenty-eight, these certified shares, as we know them today, will disappear. Additionally, the second type of local income tax revenue that Pioneer Regional School Corporation receives comes in what are called property tax relief credits or PTRC. Um, counties are allowed to adopt a certain PTRC rate and what this, this materializes on property tax bills. So when you first calculate net assessed valuation divided by a hundred times the tax rate, you get your gross property tax bill. Let's say it's a thousand dollars. In CAS County, they've passed a PTRC rate for all properties that reduce that thousand dollars by seventeen point four four two two percent, right off the bat. In White County, it's only homesteads that are reduced by approximately six point four percent. From the school corporation's perspective, this is great because before you calculate circuit breaker, it's already reduced that, that bill. And the school corporation actually receives that reduced revenue, and just not from the property tax bill. When the county auditor distributes property taxes, it also takes money it received from the state in local income tax collections and supplement it, supplements it and makes all of the local units whole. Um, so beginning in twenty-twenty-eight, this is no longer going to be. In twenty-twenty-five, uh, where Pioneer Regional School Corporation is estimated to receive five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of this local income tax revenue. So in total, we're looking at about seven hundred thousand dollars of local income tax revenue per year that is no longer going to be available to the school corporation. There is currently no identified replacement revenue source for this. So this is something that, and this is not just a Pioneer Regional Schools problem. This is statewide. Moving forward. Here we have where we previously looked at the top of this property tax bill, and this projects property tax bills all the way out through twenty-thirty. Previously, we'd only looked at the top four lines that, that end at net assessed valuation. So now let's, let's calculate the entire property tax bill. So here you have the net assessed valuation, the bolded line, multiplied by the property tax rate, divided by a hundred. You get that gross property tax liability. Uh, and this is for Royal Center. Um, so pro- property tax rates for Royal Center, which are, um, about three dollars and forty cents. So on a hundred and eighty-eight, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar home, that gross property tax liability is. uh just shy of three thousand dollars. Property tax replacement credits reduce the bill by five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Then we calculate circuit breaker, which states that no more than one percent of the gross assessed valuation can be the, the ending tax bill, and that reduces it to exactly one percent of that gross assessed valuation. So this property tax bill is one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, exactly one percent of the home value. If we assume this home value increases by three percent every year, and those deductions that we previously covered, you can see how in twenty twenty-eight, when property tax replacement credits go away, circuit breaker impact, uh which is the only mechanism left to reduce the bill, to one percent of that valuation increases, uh it almost doubles. Then, of course, you have the additional credit, which, which represents increased uh relief for property taxpayers, but also increased revenue losses for the school corporation. So really, in twenty twenty-six, when that property tax credit, the additional credit rolls on, you see a seven percent reduction in the bill. And then because this property is at their tax cap, the growth in the tax bill perfectly mirrors the assumed uh annual increase in the valuation of their home. Moving forward, just a, a similar uh calculation for illustrative purposes, um you can skip this one. Estimated property tax revenue losses. So, so these were put out by Legislative Services Agency, which is a independent, take that with a grain of salt, uh analyst firm that legislators use when crafting policies. So anytime there's a draft of a bill, LS, that's going to have a material financial impact on local government units, LSA will put together a report that projects out what that impact is going to be. So bottom line, you can see that um from pre-Senate Enrolled Act One to post-Senate Enrolled Act One, twenty twenty-six, you can anticipate about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars less revenue. DLGF recently put out some estimates, and that was closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But you can see how that, that increases year over year through twenty twenty-eight. Next slide.
They're also predicting it even higher than the years after that.
Yes, absolutely, especially in twenty-eight.
And then we're, we're also seeing with that circuit breaker for the first time, and it's not reflected on here, but as we started working through budget this year, in the past with circuit breaker, I mean typically, we would only lose thirty, forty thousand dollars with circuit breaker. It just didn't have a major impact on us. This year, all of a sudden, after this kicks in, we're already seeing over a hundred thousand dollar losses just with circuit breaker this year. So it's, it's already seen major impact.
And lumped into that, that's not to say that your property tax rates throughout the district are high enough to put people at their tax cap. A lot of that is that additional three hundred dollar, ten percent credit that's now being lumped into those estimates. Alright, so how do you plan for this? What do we do? Uh next steps would be schedule board training on legislative impacts. I think we did that, although very quickly today. At Baker Tilly, we can help you quantify this impact and prepare financial projections, very detailed. We can work with Dr. Grable and Lori to do that. Update long-term capital and debt management plans. This is so that you're able to continue funding the operations fund, maintaining facilities, providing the educational environment that you strive to for your students, while not increasing tax rates to a point where you begin to see increased circuit breaker losses, to the point where, where day-to-day operations are no longer sustainable. That would lead into that financial sustainability plan. And then, of course, at the end of, of every kind of checklist is review financial stewardship best practices. What kind of oversight do we have over this? How formal are these policies? What kind of guidelines are, are, should we implement to help us um create a sustainable future? I think we're at Q and A? Yeah, so happy to answer any questions. I know I threw a giant word salad at you, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, be it now or after the fact, or if you've had a chance to digest some of this material.
This probably doesn't matter to anybody but me. When you use the dates twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty- are you talking taxes payable in that year, which would be for the previous year, or are you talking about taxes assessed in that year to be paid in the second?
It's pay, it's, it, that's the pay year, so that would be on the previous year's assessment.
So it's twenty-six is what was it due in twenty-five?
No, no, so twenty-six is due twenty-six, but it's on twenty-five's valuation.
Right.
I think we may have said the same thing.
What I'm used to is, when you're paying your property tax, you're paying, this is from a lawyer's standpoint, you're paying-
Last year's.
For last year.
Yep, on this year's rates.
So the twenty, twenty-six figures are?
Twenty twenty-six, uh twenty-six figures are twenty twenty-five's assessment on twenty twenty-six rates.
We'll be paying in twenty twenty-six.
Correct, correct.
That's all I need to understand.
You got it.
This is all new, so we're all still muddling through this, you know, obviously, and with the help of the Baker Tilly's and Ice Millers and, and those, and we'll continue to, to work with them on those. I know, you know, uh our, our organizations, the small rural schools and our different associations are, are also lobbying and working with legislators and, and having ongoing meetings about the impact of those. We recently had some meetings with legislators, just on trying to talk to them about the, the ongoing impact of this. Cause again, they, they passed this and not fully understanding the ramifications, and then you have the conversations about, okay, now what, you know? So that we're having those conversations, and we'll continue to have those conversations.
And, and that's absolutely right. Just as things changed in the twenty twenty-five legislative session, doesn't mean they won't change again in, in twenty twenty-seven or during a short session in between. Additionally, these are interpretations of legislation as we best know them today, with conversations with bond councils, local attorneys, um and others. But at that, ultimately, it's up to um the Department of Local, Local Government Finance to implement this legislation, and their interpretation may change or evolve over time. Uh and will, of course, provide the administration with updates um on any kind of deviation from, from what's modeled here today.
Just like that, that lit is a huge deal, you know, that's, that's seven hundred thousand dollar loss in, in a year. You know, that they have no plan to, to replace. So that's, that's a piece that hopefully somebody takes a look at, you know, that
what's the reason behind that? I mean, you, you're used to having that, and then all of a sudden, they just take it away, and they don't, they give a reason why they're taking it away?
None that I'm aware of or would, would be willing to speak to publicly. They, so they, they essentially restructured what local income taxes can be used for. Local income taxes are largely um not so much for school corporations, but, but, but primary revenue sources for, for counties and cities and towns. It's a means for them to not rely so heavily on property taxes, whereas school corporations are primarily two revenue sources, state aid and property taxes. So that, they restructured that. Now, there, there is a provision um that says that the county can adopt up to zero point two percent of its new lit structure dedicated to non, what is called a non-municipal unit. So city, um school corporations and libraries, and I believe any other kind of special district would fall into that. But I, I personally don't know if, if they're allowed to just dedicate it to school corporations, or it would have to be kind of, kind of the group. Additionally, the county would have to adopt that rate, not just once, but every single year. Which is certainly a new change. There also currently is, previously, it was allowed that, that a, there was a local income tax board that, that determined this and made recommendations to, uh I believe, the, the county councilor and commissioners, and that has since been dissolved. So um we'll keep you updated with how, I'm as interested as you are as to how this will all shake out. But I think from a conservative and, and financial management standpoint, it's safe, it would behoove you to assume that lit revenue moving forward is going to be, to be minimal. From a property taxpayer's standpoint, you can all assume that the bills are probably not going to increase a whole lot moving forward.
You've heard the governor's stance, that, you know, we need to do more with less. But at the same time, the, you know, utilities and everything else keep going up, you know, so it's like, okay, you know, what do you do to mitigate that?
Yeah, as, as they continue for school choice, they're encouraging and, and directing money away from public schools into charter schools. Luckily, that's not currently a threat here, um but something to certainly keep an eye on moving forward as in twenty twenty-eight, school corporations will begin sharing operations fund revenue with any students in their district that attend a charter school operated in their district. So I think that's one of the fir- first instances I've seen of property tax dollars going to semi-private institutions. Thank you, thank you for your time and attention. You're all still awake, so. Again, any questions, please funnel those my way. I'd be happy to answer.
No, it's good information, and we're all trying to wrap our heads around, so appreciate it.
Thank you. You're certainly welcome to stay, but if you, I know you probably drove a close distance, so if you want to head-
I, I appreciate that. I will get going, and I'm sorry I took an extra twenty minutes.
We're grateful for the information.
Thank you, again.
Don't forget your water. Onto item B, annual review and approval of bus routes and safety policies.
We have Eric here. This is just an annual, annual requirement that, you know, every year he has to review all routes and kind of cover that with the board and, and safety procedures, so.
Yeah, so every year, if you guys want to brought the laptop, you guys can look at them. Basically, you just kind of sign off when we go over that. There's no, um, no kids crossing twenty-four, thirty-five, stuff like that. Sixteen on any state roads, we're all right-hand drop-off and pickups. Uh no turnarounds on state highways. We're supposed to approve any turnarounds we have on that, but we have none. Couple turnarounds out in the country, but besides that, everything's business as usual. Everything's by the state, well, no, at all, no turnaround. Oh, and railroad crossing, you guys have to approve that, but it's only down in Georgetown, so two routes over there, but.
We ensure, the rural state highways, that you have to drop off on Dorset, on state highway, we, we ensure that. So that's not always the case on, on countryside roads, but that's, you can't always guarantee that on a side road, but we do on state highways. And Eric makes, ensures all those safety procedures are, are reviewed and followed, so.
Another new law that came out that states that. Any kids I don't go over fire drill with, you guys will have to sign off, so that may be on the next one, if you don't for forty-five days. But I do have three kids on my bus route that are not, and can't move on those roads and all that. So legally over a fire evacuation drill is a no-go. So you have to sign off on this thing, that you guys understand that we do have three kids on the bus.
Do I have a motion to approve the annual bus routes and safety policies?
I make a motion that we approve the annual review and approval of the, what did I say that, bus routes and safety policies.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other questions for Eric? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, approved. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
I got one more.
He's got one more.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right. Nope, nope, you're not, you're only halfway done, so, sorry. Uh onto item C, approval of rough settlement resolution.
Did you talk to anyone? You need to have a chair on that one, or any, it's in the board?
You have informally approved this, but it needs to be approved in public meeting. And consistent with the terms of the agreement, I have given you a resolution which resides that you're entering into a confidential settlement as a result of mediation. And that it's in the best interests of the corporation, and you're authorizing Dr. Grable then to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate that settlement. And of course, as you're aware, under the terms of the settlement, we should get the payments by August twenty-eighth.
Do I need to read this, or are we good just to?
You can read it if you want, but I, the reason it reads the way it does is that way it does not disclose any of things that we're not allowed to disclose.
Alright, I like it. I have a motion to approve the rough settlement resolution. I make a motion to approve a rough settlement resolution.
Move second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Item approved.
I can't decide. Let you know that uh a former board member I ran into, she asked how it was going, I told her it had resolved, and she supported it as well. I also told her it had to be confidential, so she knows if somebody approaches her, how to respond.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Onto item D, approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year collective bargaining agreement.
Recommend approval of last year's collective bargaining agreement. I make emotionally approve the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year collective bargaining agreement.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Onto item E, approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year administrative salary increases.
We generally bring administrators after we settle with the teachers. So again, this is, this is last year's, last year's administration. We, we generally do this, the same as, as what we do with teachers. So it's a thousand dollars um on the administrator's base. So recommend approval to the administrative increases for last year.
Make a motion that we approve of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year administrative salary increase.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Onto item F, approval of the Chromebook replacement cycle.
Uh we've, we've been trying to get to a cycle for, for years. We've just discussed this with teachers, worked on an admin team, and the technology department worked on that. You have it there. The, the plan is to replace, um starting this year, Chromebooks in grades one, five, and nine. And then those Chromebooks will travel with those students for the next four years. Those students will keep those same Chromebooks for the next four years. And at the end of those four years, the, the nice thing is those Chromebooks will still have value to trade in. We have third-party vendors that will purchase those, and will get some buyback value, um being only, being four years old. So that'll get us in a replacement cycle, that the, the Chromebooks will have some value, and they'll, they'll stay current. And right, like right now, a good chunk of our Chromebooks are, are, are not going to have a warrant, you know, warranties are running now. So that makes it difficult to, to maintain them and expensive to, to fix them. So we're having to, we're having to buy extended warranties and, and things like that, just to try to maintain them, so. Again, yeah, the quote has a little over ninety thousand dollars, I think, for that, that first round of purchase. Uh this comes out of the Curricular Material Fund that, that the state supplies us. They give us about a hundred and fifty dollars per student. I guess this is what funds that. Recommend approval, so we can get on a cycle replacing our, our technology that the students use basically daily, so.
I make a motion to approve the Chromebook replacement cycle.
Second that.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Onto item G, approval of the August fifth, twenty twenty-five public meeting, S E A three, three ninety, uh T A minutes.
I'm not sure why, I mean, I'm not sure why this needs to be approved, this, here, we had that here at the TA hearing, but.
Once again, legislature has decided this is how it has to be done, whether.
I figured it was in the action items, because Brad's not, Brad wasn't there, but Brad's not here.
I don't know if we did that last year or not, but.
Okay, alright, well, do I-
We had the hearing, yeah.
I have a motion to approve the hearing.
I make a motion.
Thank you.
You all remember how well-intended that was.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. It's done. I don't know if it was required or not, but it. Um approval H, approval of special ed shared services agreement with Caston and Eastern Glass Guy.
This is just an annual, you know, annual, Caston and EP have already approved it. I, I don't think there was any, maybe a couple tweaks. There was no, no major changes in it at all. So recommend approval of this year's shared service agreement.
I make a motion that we approve the special ed shared services- I make a motion that we approve the special ed shared services agreement with Caston and Eastern Glass Guy.
Second. Moved in second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes. On to I, permission to advertise the 2026 Pioneer Original School Corporation budget. Public hearing date to be determined, adoption date October 14th, 2025.
Well, it's, it's that time of year again, they're asking permission to advertise, you know, the budget that we're starting that process. On public hearing dates, there's, there's timing. We're trying to back up. We need to look for a date today. The formal adoption would be at the October, regular meeting in October, which is the 14th. So we need to back up at, at least 10 days, you know, prior to that. So it's going to require a special meeting because we, we don't think we'll be ready in time for the actual September meeting, which is the 9th. So we're kind of looking at probably the week of September 22nd. We'll probably need to have a special meeting. It's like that week for that, the public hearing date on, on the, on the, the budget. And then, then you would be able to adopt it on the October 14th during the regular meeting. So I mean, would like the 22nd or 23rd, any, any of those Tuesdays are a normal meeting day? I mean, would, would that 23rd work?
I can't, I can't do 23rd. I'll be out of state. I could do the 30th or the, the next week or the week, the week before or the week after, but I can't do that.
The 29th would work. I think the 30th kind of pushes the 10 days, if I counted right. The 29th, I think, would, would be okay. Does 29th work with yours?
10 business days?
I don't know if it's 10 business or calendar days.
I don't know. I'd have to look.
Maybe it's 10 calendar days. It doesn't create a problem for you. I understand if it's 10 business.
Yeah, the 30th was like right on 10, so that's why I wasn't sure on the 30th or 29th.
If it's business days and it's 10, that still gets you a 10.
I'm free to 29th.
I can do the 29th. And it gives us a day wiggle room.
Okay, September 29th at six, six o'clock.
29th, six o'clock, perfect. Okay, well then you just, we need permit, permission to advertise 29th at six and then October 14th for the adoption, so permission to advertise those.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the public hearing date of September 29th at six o'clock and the adoption date October 14th, 2025? Someone would like to make a motion. I make a motion to do the public hearing on 9/29 at six o'clock and the adoption date October 14th, 2025. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's been done. So on to J, approval of donations. We have three to approve. Wayland Machine, $500 for robotics. The Andersons, $120 for FFA. United Way, $500 for elementary school family literacy night. Do I have a motion to approve these donations?
I make a motion that we approve all the three donations.
Second. Moved in second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Donations approved. On to K, approval of revised transportation handbook. Eric stuck around, so.
We just changed some of the language in it because it said like contact a certain person that no longer works here if you were calling off. Contact, show if you were, even route changes, stuff like that. So we just kind of changed some of that around.
Yeah, the biggest.
We added two things.
Yeah, the biggest changes were the two bullets on the back.
Yeah, that's the biggest changes.
Drivers should not arrive at school more than five minutes prior to the scheduled AM drop-off time. For example, if drop-off time is 7:30 AM, drivers should not arrive prior to 7:25 AM. And drivers are expected to be on their bus supervising students as soon as students exit a, a building and enter a bus. Students should not be left unattended on a bus. We added those two, those two bullets were not in there. We added those two. The rest were just, yeah, I mean, just clarifying that Eric was the contact person a lot of times with transportation directors, so they, those were minor things.
Is the radio going?
Working bugs out of them, but I'll give you my comment after you turn them off. Has the rep come back? Did the rep come back?
I think he's.
Tomorrow?
You mean, there's no, there's no bugs in technology like with the recording equipment for the meetings?
Yeah, yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised transportation handbook? I make a motion to approve revised transportation handbook.
I second.
Moved in second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Handbooks approved. On to discussion facilities reports.
All right, school is underway. We had lots of smiling faces on the first day, not too many, not too many tears. They were, they were short-lived when they walked in the building, so they were good. We had 52 new students enroll at Pioneer Elementary School, which is great. We had 23 withdrawn. Got information about that if you have any questions later. New staff members Katie Cow, Kayla Rice, and Chelsea Roller. They're heading right in, doing a fantastic job. Really excited to have them aboard. We also have three staff members who are, are going to participate in the new I U K teacher program. So Haley Glides again, she approved for another year of teaching service, Deanna Hoak and Kalina Weaver. Those two are going to do the aid, what's it called?
Well, it's a paraprofessional licensing program, but they've also, all three of them have also applied for the apprenticeship program where there's also potentially some, some workforce development grant money available to help pay for mentors and, and money potentially available to them to help them pay for tuition dollars and things like that, so. We're, we're just now starting to apply for the, the workforce development dollars. I just got access to the portal today, so we're just starting that process, but.
There's a welcome dinner tomorrow evening at I U K. I'm going to attend that, so we can get through before you start it. Uh, like, you know, in conjunction with that, with the new brew, your own program that the, the high school is doing, you've got, got some good candidates coming up through the programs.
We'll need to be looking, Ms. Brown is Haley's mentor. We'll need to find a mentor for the other two. But each of the other two will also need to identify mentors for.
Uh, in July, we had a group of teachers from the elementary and there were some from the high school as well that attended the P L C Institute in Lincolnshire in Illinois. It was a great several days, wonderful conference. Dr. Grable's mentioned some of the things that we, we talked about there. We had Crystal Centers, Alley Parks, Lisa Brown, Dakota Williams, four from our building that went, I went as well. My fifth time I've been there. Still learn something new every year that I go, so we appreciate you guys letting us attend that each year. Um, again, I can't thank Kenny, Laura, Jason, and Melissa enough for the work that they did to get our elementary office done and complete. We're about 98% complete with some touch-up work considered to happen, but it's a, it's a great space, a working space. It's much more secure and we're enjoying that. I want to give a special shout-out recognition to Lisa Ruff, our custodian. As you know, Carolyn has been off. And so Lisa's the only custodian there during the day, and so she is working a lot, a lot. We try to pick up and try to help around as much as we can, but she's put in a lot of, a lot of time and covered multiple areas as well. Carolyn's out, so if you see her, give her some, give her some love. She, she. See, staff K through two are special ed and our interventionists were trained in the new M-class Dibbles assessment just before school started. Utilize that and place a NDA. This first week and a half, the teacher's been working really hard on procedures, especially kindergarten teachers. Again, you see kindergarten teachers, don't give them a big hug. This group of kindergartners, they, they need some help with some procedures. We've also implemented learning labs two times per day this year as, as per our RTAC and N T S S intervention. So there's a reading learning lab and math learning lab, and those are getting underway. And our interventionists will be meeting with teachers weekly on Wednesdays to plan one of those groups. We're excited about, about that. We have one fifth grader who is utilizing the online curriculum that's, that's approved for grade six through 12. He is an accelerated math student, so he's taking a seventh grade math course and he's flying through it right now. So we're trying to figure out something to, to go deeper and get him a little more challenging. That way he's not taking trigonometry by the time he's in seventh grade. We're, we're really proud of what he's done so far and with the support of his parents, obviously, as well. We decide, we, we built a leadership team, guiding coalition team that's established, so it has team leaders within that who go and disseminate information, bring things back for discussion for us. That has started. We've got all our, our door numbers and everything are finally reassigned. Old office is being used as a nurse's clinic. It's an expansion and in-school detention area. Adam is working with Ron Frost to kind of make that more of a, a teaching skills opportunity, not just a punishment area, but also teaching skills. So example would be a student's having trouble with lunch procedures, and so we assign that student to Mr. Frost and Adam for maybe a week or two, depending on how long it takes to, to get proficient at the skills. And then we release, we release them back into the wild, go back into lunch, and then they would check in, you know, maybe a couple times a week and then go off on that. So we're, we're looking forward to getting that started. I think we already had one started this week with that. Monthly school assemblies are getting started, so all the kids come down in the morning, uh, once a month, and we talk about life skills in months, student celebrations, and our school vision. Fifth and sixth grade being in choir this year after the elementary. We just finished a new space, a better space for a choir to have so they're not disrupting the classroom next to them. And then elementary athletics start next week. Off to a great start. Are there any questions or anything?
Yeah, we're at the high school. Again, just want to echo Mr. Quillen about the custodian and maintenance with, with Blake, Haley, Riley, Bill, Kenny, Laura, Melissa, and Jason. Building looks great. Excited to have students back in the building. Uh, as we continue to, to provide that nurturing environment, we had a grade level meeting, set those expectations for both behavior and academics. Working, working on our junior high incentive for the first nine weeks. We're thinking an afternoon at the park would be a great thing for them. Uh, we do have a vaping convo for all grades, seven through 12. Uh, that will be at the end of the month. And I'll tell you what, open house was awesome. Our seventh grade, our, our gymnas, excuse me, our gymnasium, our auditorium was packed. Great to see a lot of parents in for our seventh grade orientation and just walking the building and getting familiar with it. Uh, for our literacy and master academic standards, I went to Lincolnshire for the first time, learned a lot. I had Johanna and Ellen Go as well, and then had a great, a great partnership this year with Notre Dame for their AP tip, which is AP classes. Excited about that. Ellen and Justice has started that process just to, to provide better for our students within their AP classes. I'm sending my English teachers to the literacy PD here in October. And then September 10th, we'll do curriculum mapping, continue that process with Betsy in September. Learning Service Project, our seniors will be participating in Live United Day, September, what, 12th? September 12th, excited for them. And then Mr. Quillen also said, as we, as we get our kids ready for college and career life readiness, I have four, four students participating in I U K's Teachers of Tomorrow. They do receive dual credit for that, which is, is pretty awesome for them. And then I also have 15 students, which is the biggest number we've had, participating in internships through the Career Center. And that's kind of, kind of starting to go along with the new, new high school diploma, even though they're on the old one. We're, we're starting that process of encouraging that. Excellence in, in academics, Mia McKay just shot a new 18-hole record at Dykman over the weekend, shot a 77. Volleyball scrimmage tonight over at.
Northwestern?
Western.
Western, Western. Football is at Northwestern this Friday for their scrimmage, and they cross-country. We'll start their season on the 19th at Northwestern. Uh, we've, we've started our club call-outs. Everything is underway. Just a couple of things to finish up. I challenged my staff this year. Our thing is, what will your legacy be at the end of the school year, of the 2025 school year? What will your footprint be on students? So they did not want to take their shoes and socks off to make footprints. So we, we have a tree to get a thumbprint. All right, you guys are welcome after, after the meeting. I have the ink. If you would like to make your thumbprint, no footprints please, thumbprint in our, in our tree as we are a community. And I have wipes. It comes off great. And then in June, I shared with you guys our data numbers. Uh, I just want to share this with you, with you again, because I want to highlight, I didn't have the numbers for the state. I just had our numbers at the, at the junior, senior high school, so we were able to, to get it from the state. The only thing that I'm not able to get is the PSAT scores, but I would like to go through those, those numbers for you. During our class meetings, I mean, we celebrated our, our junior high, our junior high students, the seventh and eighth graders. Now our eighth graders and, and freshmen, you know, we had a little popper. We were shooting the cannons off with the confetti and just, just really celebrated those. So if, I'll, I'll go through it fairly quickly. I know we've been here, but super proud of our, our students with their perseverance, hard work, nose to the grindstone, as well as our teachers. And when you go through there, you look at our seventh grade, uh, language arts, 44%. So what I did is I took the data and it is all public schools in the state of Indiana. Uh, and I know I shared this out on Facebook the other day and some of you, is it called reshare? Yeah, you reshared it, uh, which I appreciate. Uh, I, I think we need to celebrate the, the kids' accomplishments because this is, this is pretty amazing. So this is, this is up against other public schools. No class, right? This is all public schools. So we were here, 27th, uh, which is top 26% in the state. And then eighth grade, uh, language arts, 51% pass rate, 47th, uh, top 20% in the state. What an accomplishment. And math, you look at that, that's 61, 29th in all public schools, top 6% in the state. And then eighth grade math, 73% passed at proficiency or above, top 1% in the state, sixth in all public schools. And actually with that one, if you go to corporations, we're the number one corporation in the school, or excuse me, in the state of Indiana. Just, just exceptional, exceptional. The PSAT scores are exactly what you got in June, uh, because I can't, I can't find where I can compare those to other schools. Uh, but SAT is definitely out there. When you look at our SATs, again, this is all public schools, 111th would meet that for a pathway. So when I say 58%, that's meeting it for a pathway. That's not quote, quote, passing, uh, but meeting it for a pathway, top 29%. And then math's at 34, which is 51, and, uh, top 13% in the state. So super proud of our students and what they've accomplished in 24, 25. And again, I challenge my staff. You know, when, when you look at what the kids have done, why can't we be number one? And I said that to my staff and I said that to my students, um, because when, when you look at it, it's definitely achievable. I guess there are any questions?
Excellent. Great talking. Yes. My gosh. I saw when you posted it to Facebook the other day and all of these, and like, and.
I remember setting, as we developed the first strategic, you know, the strategic plan and we revised the strategic plan. When we set our vision statement, you know, top 25% by, you know, whatever, 2025, and we revised it, top 25% by 2030. Which is right, right there, you know. We got quite a bit of pushback on that initially of, you know, you know, that that was not a realistic goal. Well, it is, you know, we, it is. We, we can easily get, we, we should be there. With our clientele, we, we should be there. You know, that's, and, and we've, we've shown that we can be there and we should be there, so.
Excellent. Yeah, great. Lot to be proud of.
Yep. And we, like I said, we shared too, we had great growth in I RE this year. What, 82%? 87% passing in I RE this year was tremendous growth we saw this year, so we need to celebrate those, so.
And the greenhouse looks awesome. Very nice.
Getting there, a little frustrated, but not as fast as it's getting there. We're, we're waiting on the local contractor to come finish. He's, he was supposed to have been here two, three weeks ago to, to finish, but has not shown up. Now he knows, now some of the work they can come and do while the kids are here. There's some electrical work inside that can be done while the kids are here. The, the electrical is run to, to the greenhouse, so, you know, that's done. So they can do the electrical work inside the greenhouse while the kids are here, finishing those hookups. And then laying the brick on the exterior, obviously they can do that while, you know, while the kids are here. But now the finishing the interior door, he knows he's going to have to do that in the evening or on weekend, you know, that's, he can't do that while the kids are here, so. We're, we're just, we're waiting on, that's, that's either. Um, we're, we're just, we're waiting on, that, that's, that's either, um, Jason, the, the local contractor, or I forget the, uh, subcontractor. Starts with an S, local, local subcontractors.
Sheppler.
Sheppler, thank you, Sheppler, Sheppler, um, it's either Jason or Sheppler that, that's doing tho- those, that work, so. We're waiting on them to, to get that wrapped up, so we can get, get rolling with it. Once that's done, then, then maintenance will finish the, the putting together the furniture, getting, getting the furniture in, and we're ready to roll, so. Um, the other one, other than Jason's, we're waiting on Jason also to finish the quotes on the bullards for some of our entry, the concrete bullards to secure entries, so like a car couldn't drive through, you know. Drive through an entrance, um, like a park entrance is a concern at the, at the elementary, for example, especially, especially when it's icy, you know, kinda thing, as, as cars are coming through for, for car riders and stuff like that, and, and certain other ones. We'd like to get some concrete bullards up, so we're waiting on Jason for that. The fire vents are pretty well done, you know, on the, on the auditorium, that's done, we are looking for some electrical to potentially wire them to, for, for release now, they're manual. Some little things like that, the pool, pool is done, the pump's done, now we're just trying to get chemicals balanced, that, that takes a little bit of time. Within a week to two weeks here, that'll be, the, it'll, pool will be open, ready, ready for swimmers, uh, once those chemicals get balanced, um. I think most projects, Eric, I mean, you might ta- talk about the radios, I mean, that, they've been a little frustrating, it's, it's been spotty, it's certain ones, we've had some trouble with. We've got the reps coming and dealing with that.
I'll talk to the year, but yeah, a lot of them are spotty, a lot of them don't work, some of them ain't charging, so, may have going on.
It's all brand new, right?
Yeah. Yeah, my fear is like they went to talk on the shop truck radio and it doesn't work, instead of trying to connect service up ahead of them.
We don't know if it's like a bad radio, so they'll have to replace the radio, or, or what, but I mean, we're not hearing that, we're not hearing as much of that from Ross, but, you know, the ones out ahead of us.
I talked to them today, they kinda had some hiccups when they first started too.
So we're hoping, you know, we just gotta work through these hiccups and.
I'll have more answers tomorrow when we come back.
Again, you, you, we gotta remember the alternative was, you know, we had to replace that tower, you know, it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to replace the tower, so this was, this was the alternative, so we just, we'll work through it with the reps and hopefully get there, so.
That's a good sign they're coming, so, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, they've been responsive, it's just, it's a matter of just getting the hiccup to work through, you know.
Laurie, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. Cox?
No.
I will piggyback on Jeff, the Lincolnshire trip was, was phenomenal, and, you know, I'm starting year thirty-six. I don't think it's year thirty-six, I've been to a lot of national conferences, and that was probably one of the best national conferences I've, I've been to, and. We're excited about what, where, where that can take us, uh, we're, I'm taking the admin team to, uh, an admin boot camp on, on September tenth, Jim Snap is, is. He was a superintendent at, uh, uh.
Brownsburg?
Brownsburg, um, and he does, he's done a considerable amount of P L C work, and a lot of his stuff is leadership around P L Cs, and he, he's doing some, um. Admin team, team building around leading P L Cs and some stuff like that, and he's, he's, he's coming into Wallbatch Valley, um, our service center and doing a, a half-day boot camp for admin, to doing some strategic planning and. Leading that, and then some follow-up coaching for your admin teams around, a lot of it around that P L C piece, so we're, we're, we're excited about really digging into that, you know? From what we see and everything we saw at that conference, that, that, that will be the mechanism that's really gonna launch us and, 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 and take us to that next level, like, like what we're seeing with, with, with these, this data. That's, that, from what we're seeing across the country, that is one of the mechanisms that really takes you to that data-wise, that, that next growth level of, of that, that performance and growth, so.
Anything from anybody on the board? Alright, I have a safe trip, may I, meeting adjourned? It can be turned off, but this thing has not turned in.